Ding Felder, Gudes, Maniscalco, Citro, Miranda, Carlson, Vieira.
Here. Okay, we begin now with our last item, which is the Budget Workshop. And I know before we begin, Councilman Citro, you want to introduce your intern? If they're here, do you want to wait?
He is not here. Alvin, are you anywhere around? It can wait, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll do it then.
He's probably doing some duty that I asked him to do.
There you go.
And Mr. Chairman, while you're on that subject, I want to wish Elizabeth Tony a fond farewell. She's done a great job. Today is her last day as our intern, ending her summer. And she gets on a plane tomorrow to go to New York and then check with Slovakia for a semester abroad. But she's done a great job. She's very bright. And she'll be wonderful in government and politics if that's her choosing.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, we begin with item number seven. Mr. Rahero.
Good afternoon, Council. Dennis Rahero, interim Chief Financial Officer. Thank you for having me here today. You have heard the mayor say a few things about this budget that you've been presented, that it's not a wow budget and doesn't have a whole lot of dazzling things in it. And that's certainly true. You've heard her say it addresses deferred maintenance services and continues to shore up our financial condition. You may recall that one of her strategic objectives is ensuring our financial stability. And this budget does those things. You've also heard the mayor say there are wonderful, wonderful things happening in this city. And of course, there are. I've seen it. You've seen it. We're experiencing it right now. We anticipate that wonderful things are going to continue to happen in the city. But you've also heard the mayor say that we're not out of the woods yet. And we're not. Setting aside the tumult occurring in the markets and the economy and what time it is and who's done a report, we anticipate continuing major challenges ahead of us as we go through the next couple of fiscal years. You've heard some of them. The debt service payments associated with bonds that are over 20 years old. The continuing increase in health insurance costs. Actions taken in the past and in the present that will continue to have a recurring impact on our finances. So I say all this to some, the budget, a little bit of a mixed bag. It's got some really good stuff in it, we think. Things that have been overdue or deferred, as I said, but also some things that still need to take place, looking out to the future.
Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, Dennis, just point of order. Did you want to hear from these folks?
Yeah, I was actually going to do that. As soon as Mr. Rahero was done with his opening, I should have probably had the public go first. I know some of these folks have been waiting here. But you may finish, and then we'll break briefly for the public.
And I just did, only to say thank you. I appreciate your genuine interest in the budget. Chief of Staff is here. Budget Leadership is here. I'm here. And if we can't answer your questions here, we'll get you those answers in very short order.
Thank you very much. And before we go to the public comment, Mr. Bennett, again, I pay your time deference. We're dealing with a storm. Do you plan on being here the whole workshop? Or do you have something you want to say and then deal with responsibilities? I leave that up to you as an obvious courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Bennett, Chief of Staff, City of Tampa. Great question. Great timing. We just received notification to convene as our executive policy group at the county at a time certain this afternoon to start making decisions. Just to Councilman Gudes' question earlier, I talked to the fire chief. He's preparing some documentation and memorandums to council to make sure that you're well informed of what your next moves are and how you can better help us communicate with the public. So I'm going to stay as long as possible because I want to make sure that, you know, we're, again, co-producing this chapter of government through the budget process. But I'm going to stay as long as I can.
Great. I just, yes, sir, Councilman Gudes.
Chief of Staff, thank you for that. You know, we were in the back talking. Even some of the, our aides were talking as well. Well, what does council do? What do we do? So I appreciate your leadership on getting on that right away because we do need to know if something is happening. We've got to be ready to move.
Yeah, and I will tell you, from my nine days on the ground, I apologize that you don't know that ahead of time, and we'll take care of it.
Thank you, sir. And I know I speak for everybody when I say that if you have to duck out, there will be no offense taken, obviously so. Okay, now what we're going to do, and Sal, did you have something?
I apologize. Sal, Trade and Legal Department. I will be bringing to you tonight, at the beginning of your meeting, a resolution dealing with the possibility of us not being able to hold our public hearing on the third. What we're looking at right now is basically saying that if we can't have the meeting on the third because of the storm, assuming we get hit, that the meeting will be moved to the ninth. But that also means you've got to move the second hearing because there's time in between time for advertising, which will probably be the ninth and the 23rd. What I'm going to try to do is draft it in such a way that it gives you that as an option, not as a requirement, because if the storm doesn't hit, we're going to continue as is. But once this is finished, I'll run upstairs, get the resolution prepared, and bring it back to you at tonight's meeting, just to keep you in the loop on what we are doing.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Maniscalco.
I remember the evening of September 1st, 2016, and we had a tropical storm warning or watch. And we had, you know, the mayor was adamant in moving forward with our public hearings. So we'll see what happens with this one.
Right. The last one, I think the two years ago one, we had, I think we did get a continuance on the hearing because it was a storm, I think when the last storm came through. But we're dealing with the contingencies, not the certainties.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, usually we take public comments after we're finished. But given the late hour that we've gone into, as a courtesy to the good folks who wish to speak, we will take public comment before. So if you wish to speak on this item, please stand up. A line up against over there to my left. And let's begin.
I have a letter that I want to enter into the record. And I have some other things that I'd like to pass forward. May I pass a few more? Big breath. 2:43. I've got to go. I'm already 15 seconds down. Good afternoon. Mario Nunez, 15022 Rocky Ledge Drive. Thank you, council members, for listening to us this morning and allowing us to speak on what too many of us here, and those of us that were here early, those that can't be with us today, see as a very important issue, the viability of Tampa Bay Arts and Education Network. TBAE is a nonprofit, award-winning production house that for over 25 years has received full support from the City of Tampa. And explicitly, two years ago, we were dropped completely from the city's budget. While others received a modest diminished contribution, TBAE's stipend was reduced to zero. I am the creator, producer, host of the tele-award-winning Tampa Native Show, a broadcast loyal to the preservation of Tampa's amazing history. Most of you have appeared with me on that telecast. And privately, all of you have expressed gratitude for the work we do in the community and the appreciation to our dedication to task. TBAE is a tremendous asset to the City of Tampa and her residents. Why is that not embraced, why are they not embraced for the incomparable work that they do? No one is producing the programming that TBAE does. And it does, it does it with a staff of three, three of the hardest-working employees I know. We also give talented students, you've heard from today from USF, HCC, and UT, the opportunity to grow their career experience with internships. We are here today to show strong allegiance for the restoration of funding support from the city we all love and hold dear. Just listen to the titles of some of the award-winning shows, Art Off the Wall, Evening Tide Talks, Filmmaker Spotlight, Innovators in Science, Jolt TV, Steam Ahead, and the Tampa Native Show, and Veterans Strong. Imagine if you will, the City of Tampa living up to its promise to promote the arts, as we heard along the campaign trail. Nothing more important to the constituents of this fair city than promises kept. After all, the "A" in TBAE stands for arts. With so much growth in the immediate future of our city, we feel there's a great opportunity at hand to share that good news. There's so much work to do. There we go. And no one is positioned better to do that than TBAE. YouTube clips alone just aren't enough to tell the story. Older tampeños are still sitting in front of their TVs, enjoying what they know and feel comfortable with. Allow me to close by once again saying thank you for your hard work as the city faces challenges, as we continue to morph into something that old-timey tampeños really just don't recognize. And with a hurricane bearing down upon our state, there's much to be concerned with. Please don't leave TBAE out of your budget plans tomorrow. We thank you for your consideration. I lost 15 seconds because I gave...
Sir, you may finish.
I just, my subsequent thought to all of this was, and it came to me in the last session while we were talking, just before we broke for lunch, in this time of emergency and awareness and all of the things that we're going through here as a community, TBAE is another platform, another megaphone, if you will, to disseminate information. I think it would be great if we could have a seat at the table along with CTTV and along with all the other news organizations to help get the word out for people to be safe and be careful. And again, thank you. And I'll take my telly now.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Denzel. I appreciate all of your time. I'm a recent intern with Tampa Bay Arts and Education Network. It has been a pleasure to work with them. I've met some people who are extremely dedicated and a pleasure to be with. Like you said, as a staff of three people. And they are highly dedicated and very attentive to the network and the internship program that they have there. I was fortunate to meet them while working at the venue that the Gasparilla International Film Festival was held at. And I just expressed my passion and my interest in entering the media arts. And they were generous enough to have me. And I've just been able to see how everything runs. I didn't have any outlets to enter the media arts, if you may say. And they granted me an opportunity to see how everything runs, to express my passion and editing and arts and stuff like that. And I think it's a great outlet for the City of Tampa to see different, you know, outlets and things that are going on in the city. And as someone that, I recently moved to Tampa, and I think it's a great idea and something that should continue to be on a network and funded. So thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Sturgis, 505 East Jackson Street. In 2009, Tampa Educational Cable Consortium, better known back then as the Education Channel, accepted me as an intern for their prominent film festival, the Independence Film Festival. My job was to screen films ranging from a length of 30-minute shorts to long-format documentaries that sometimes extended to three hours. In 2013, I was hired at what now known as the Tampa Bay Arts and Education Network. My main goal was to boost our awareness on social media and in the community. And I also got the opportunity to lead the internship program. Today, not only is the internship program thriving with most recent eight students from UT, HCC, and USF completing over 950 hours during our summer program, but our goals of producing content that promotes arts, cultural, and education programming is overwhelming. People from the community constantly reach out to us to either create a five-minute impact film such as The Sidewalk: Stompers or pitch us an idea for a new one-hour series that focuses on African-American history. Those who approach us never ask us to create a 90-second piece because that is just not a realistic amount of time to tell their stories. These people, these people are not the only ones who believe longer-format programming is important. HBO just finished a successful eight seasons of Game of Thrones, which each episode was one hour long, and they estimated a revenue of $3.1 billion. Or how about AMC: The Walking Dead? They are in their 10th season, each episode being an hour long. And who knows how much they've received in revenue. These networks don't put these episodes on YouTube. They have their own streaming service, just like us at TBAE. Why? Because social media is ever-changing and can't be controlled. I just recently deleted YouTube off of my daughter's iPad because people were doing the Momo suicide challenge. So how does this pertain to the City of Tampa or its government body? If long-formating program is not important, then why are the Tampa Tiger Bay Club forums at least an hour long? Or why are the presidential debates at least two hours long? Why? Because you can't tell your story in just 90 seconds. And I respectfully ask you to restore Tampa Educational Cable Consortium or TBAE's funding so that we may continue to continue telling stories that are important to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Vieira and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Glenda Maiden. I'm the Director of Programming and Production at Tampa Bay Arts and Education Network, formerly known as the Tampa Educational Cable Consortium. When I was a junior in high school, at Laton High School, I had the opportunity to participate in the mayor's summer job program. I was assigned a receptionist job at USF. And this was my first exposure into the professional world. And it gave me the desire to be a professional. And it was instrumental in creating, shaping my career. When I was in my, fast forward 26 years later, and this summer here at TBAE, I got the chance to pay it forward. I was able to hire a high school student for the summer. His name is Dylan Lasarica from Blake High School. He wanted to be here today, but he's in school. So I'm happy to say he had a great first experience, and I was able to give him that first glimpse of the professional world of video production here in Tampa. This is the type of organization TBAE represents. We are here not just as the cable channel that is a line item on a spreadsheet. We've been keeping up with technology and the times. And we've also evolved our services into a free streaming service, watch.tbae.net. Most of the students that come here are so grateful for the opportunity to get real-world experience and actually be treated as a team member and not just an intern. They are given the chance to work on real video production projects that are a part of Tampa's fabric of art, education, and culture. Many of you have had the chance to come to our studio, and if you haven't, please do. It's a small operation, but you can plainly see that we utilize every resource given to produce meaningful work for the community, whether it's preserving the story of a local musician, documenting an environmental lecturer at the aquarium, or helping to amplify the work of a local artist to a wider audience. We put our skills, talent, and heart into every project. This is most apparent in our leader, G. Scott Maiden, who has spent his whole career in keeping this organization alive and recreating TBAE into what it is today. As his partner in life, I see him constantly struggling between his love for the station, keeping it running technically because he's still the engineer there, as well as financially for the staff there as well, trying to balance, all while trying to balance being a loving dad and hide all these worries from his kids. We only have three full-time employees who have been shouldering this vicious cycle of wondering if we have to close our doors every six months since I've been working there since 2007. Because arts and education are always the first things to get cut out of budgets. But if we continue to, but we continue to do this work because we love this community. We love mentoring the future. We love being able to help the other local nonprofits here. We can, how can the hardest little TV station not be supported and not backed? I'm proud of the work we've produced in my 12 years here. I'm proud of the diversity you see at our organization when you walk through our doors. TBAE deserves to be part, put back into the budget.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate it. Next, please. This gentleman apparently will be our last speaker for public comment.
Councilman, my name is Gregory Scott Maiden. And I am the Executive Director, CEO, President, call it what you will, also engineer of the Tampa Bay Arts and Education Network. We're across the street. Most of you guys know me. I appreciate the time each of you shared with me to talk to me in recent times. You've all are well aware of our situation. I think you're all well aware of what a PEG channel is and what this has meant to the community for over 30 years. I know you're also, most of you have been connected to one or at least one or maybe more of our programs over the last few years, even Mr. Miranda. So I don't feel the need to go into a lot of depth about really who we are. I think you guys know who we are, and I think you guys know what we do. So before you, I have two handouts here, one of which I'm going to try to get to, but I'm going to concentrate primarily on this funding allocation here. We are requesting to be put back in to the nonprofit funding assistance that we've received basically for about 30 years. We need that money to buy, to pay for some new employees. As you've heard, we've had three people in full-time staff, and we have maybe three times that many interns alone. We have constantly hearing from members of our community, too, about the stories that they would like us to tell. And so we have a long list of projects that we would like to develop and work on. And that's where we need some help for doing that. I need maybe a full-time and a part-time editor and somebody to help me shoot. You guys, I'm sure, have seen me out in the field. I'm the CEO, but I'm the guy carrying the camera, too, and the tripod and setting all that up. So we all wear a lot of hats, and we're looking for a couple of other people that can kind of step up and help for that, too. We've also had to put off upgrading some of our equipment over the last couple of years due to the budget cutbacks. This has put us in kind of a precarious position. We take very good care of our equipment, and we really leverage our technology as far as we can. But the fact is that computers and servers, they do have a finite lifespan on that. And we're approaching the end on a couple of those things right now, too. So without being able to replace those in the future, any one of those could be a catastrophic danger to us at the moment. So if we're able to get this, I mentioned some of the programming that we would like to do in the future. We've heard very strongly from the African-American community that their history has not been represented well. I had a meeting yesterday with Bette Lewis from the NAACP, and we've agreed to partner with her in order to develop maybe a five-part studio series on African-American history, as well as covering the NAACP's existence here in Hillsborough County. We also want to continue on with a couple of our arts programs. Art Perspective, we want to get back out into the field more, and we can highlight more of the installations and art projects that are outside of our studio. We have a very successful studio art show, but that does require artists and people from the art community to come into our studio. And it's a little bit hard to show what they actually do. So we want to get back out into the community to do that, too. Another program that we do with that is Filmmaker Spotlight. I know a couple of people have mentioned that today. And Filmmaker Spotlight is another one we've won an award for. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and I appreciate your thought and consideration.
We appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfeld.
Thank you. Scott, just a quick recap. Up until a few years ago, I wasn't here, you guys were to the tune of how much on the city budget?
It was about $108,000.
$108,000.
When we were cut from, we were cut from $108,000 to zero.
Okay, and how long has that been?
Two years.
So exactly two years ago.
Almost, yeah. We were here, I think.
So for the last two years, you've been zero. Okay. Thank you very much. And you provided, just for the record, I think at least one document today that speaks to how you would utilize that $100,000 for various programming?
Yes, sir.
And can you go through a little bit of that programming at the bottom there? The, what you've highlighted, African-American?
Sure. So two of these programs, Art Perspective and Filmmaker Spotlight, are existing programs that we have been, we've been producing for several years. Filmmaker Spotlight, I think, is in its fifth or sixth season right now, and it works very closely with Gasparilla Arts Festival. Art Perspectives is really our field program to cover art events that's happening in the field. So that could be an art lecture. That could be a tour, walk-through with a docent at one of the art museums. That could be checking out one of the mayor's new art neighborhood projects that I've heard of, mentioned. Those kinds of things, we've already had going. Veterans Strong is something that we're developing now with some of our partners at McDill and in the military to really highlight our veteran population here in Hillsborough County and what's happening as they transition from active service into our civilian population. So we're looking for success stories of entrepreneurs who have been able to take their skill set that they learned in the military and then apply those to civilian life successfully. And then there's also a large portion of that show that talks about highlights benefits that's available for these veterans throughout the county and things that may have gone off the radar for some of them and figure out how they can take advantage of those kinds of things. And then the other two are really honing in on, you know, we have a long track record of producing programs about local history. We have several tele-awards, Characters of Ebor, Tampa Native Show. These have all won national recognition for our attention for that. But we've recently been brought to the attention that, you know, we were overlooking a certain population of the African-Americans community. And they had a good story.
One other follow-on. Thank you, Scott. That's very comprehensive. It appears to me, without any offense to you and your hard-working gang, that you guys operate on a shoestring. But I'm wondering, where do you, you haven't had any city money for two years. How are you staying on the air? How are you staying alive? Where do you get your money from?
That's correct. Okay, so, you know, flash it back. PEG channels essentially are operated by funds received from taxes that the city and the county levies on the cable companies for doing business. So in the last, over the last 10 years, though, for whatever reason, I was the engineer at this time, I'm not privy to this, we, those funds stopped flowing through to the Education Channel and the Public Access Channel. So they stayed at the city television and the county television channel, but they didn't come to us. So at that point in time, 10 years ago, we had to really go back to our members and the people who were supporting us and to look for other ways to find those finances. And of course, number one of those was, at the time, our largest benefactor, our largest partner at the time was the Hillsborough County School System. So we had to start charging them. Up until 20 years, they received everything that the City, Tampa, basically, is doing with you guys. They received that for free. It was subsidized by those tax dollars that came from that, from your cable bill. So after 10 years, we had to go back to them and tell them that they're going to have to start paying then. So that's, the last 10 years, they've been ponying up and paying for their broadcast services. And basically, after the last two years, when this happened, to make things a little bit easier and to try to really answer this question and talk about monetizing the channels and figuring out how we were going to finance them, we decided it would be fair to the school district to create and white-label their own channel for them. So we created Hillsborough Schools Television. We moved everything that they do over to that channel and gave them free rein over that. We manage it. It runs on all of our systems. It's broadcast in 16 by 9, as well as our channel. And we also have a streaming component that goes along with them, too. Also covers all the closed captioning. So that part, that one half of our network, if you will, that one channel is paid for in part by, almost in full by them. It's the second one, TBAE, that we do the programming for the city for, that is receiving zero funds right now. We are getting money from the state of Florida. They helped us develop our streaming service. Years ago, they saw that that was of interest to them, and they thought it was a great way to promote Florida to people outside of the community. So they started giving us some, we've been working off an operational grant for that. It's not, it's not very much. And like for last year, it varies. It comes from a pot that is... It comes from a pot that is hit a lot. And of course, we had a lot of unfortunate things happening, the school shootings that really affected that over the last year. So that went from a nice chunk of change to almost nothing. And we really can't judge that. We have no control over that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Good.
Yes, sir. And then Councilman Minuska.
I mean, that's a, that's a big hit to go from that kind of money to nothing in a short period of time like that, and that was unfortunate.
We're still here.
And that's good, you know? It's good to do some ways to keep you moving. I know when I went over and did a tour of your place, and you talked about the Hillsborough County School System, and you kind of told me how our system here is kind of outdated.
Yes, sir.
And we're behind the times. And that really kind of struck my eye, that we're a city of this size, and if we're behind time with our marketing and getting information out to the public, that was concerning. And you kind of touched on a little bit about the school system and so forth, so that was the big peak of my interest. So with saying that, can you correlate the difference between, so I can really understand what we're doing here versus what you're doing over there, as to relate to a better system or a better way of marketing?
Okay, well, the number one thing I'm talking about, I got to throw a shout-out to whoever's doing your captioning. I am the engineer, so I'm a real geek. I look at all these things, the cameras and everything like that. But your captioning is fantastic. I haven't seen a single mistake today. Your cameras, your television looks great in here. It does not look that way to our audience doing at home, though. And I've showed, I know at least five or six of you guys over here. What you're doing is you're taking 16 by 9 programming feed, and you're trying to display it on a standard definition channel. Now, standard definition channels are square, so they have bars on the side. And they're taking this 16 by 9 signal and compressing it into a square and sending it out to the viewers' television at home. When they turn their TV on, on either Spectrum or Frontier Fias, and they watch your meetings, you guys are getting a big diet. You're getting, you know, it's getting squeezed down. Everything is distorted. And in our view, we have learned this from the school district, from working with them, your brain and your eye and your ear are constantly at battle with each other. And what your eyes see overpowers what your ears and what you may read and what you smell. Your eyes have the authority when it comes to what your brain is sensing as reality. So the first thing that they see before they hear a single word out of your mouth...
And sir, let me interrupt you if I may. I'll give you 20 more seconds to finish this question.
Is, it's distorted. So I think that's what we're talking about. We figured out a way to take that 16 by 9 signal, compress it, send it out to everybody, and then pop it back out without our viewers having to do anything with their remote controls. It's automatic. And I've been willing to share that for years, but nobody has expressed interest except for you so far.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Minuska.
I remember two years ago when you had your funding cut to zero, and it was the only budget I voted against so far. And, you know, getting to know you guys and TBAE and the technology that you use and touring your facility, which I have before, it is so impressive. Because we had to think about the importance of education and the content that we're putting out to our young folks and what they're seeing. You know, YouTube was mentioned. I use YouTube because there's a lot of great documentaries on it. I use Netflix because there's a lot of stuff on it. I don't have cable. I use these internet streaming services. But with you and TBAE, you have the app. And on that app, which anybody can download, which is free to anyone, look at the content that you're putting on there. I know you had astronaut Story Musgrave, one of the most intelligent people I've ever, I've ever met. You have the Tampa Native Show, which is strictly geared toward Tampa history. You're talking about the NAACP show or program, the African-American Heritage in Tampa Bay, which is so important. I know that there's a documentary on Central Avenue that floats around PBS and whatnot. And it's a little showcase on the African-American community. You want to expand upon that because there's so much more history that needs to be told. But to go from $108,000 in funding to zero and then having to survive two years after that is not fair, considering the quality of information that you're putting out there and the importance, the great importance of the education of what people are watching. And you're showcasing our city. I mean, it's, consider it advertising, $100,000. I mean, the message that you're putting out there just puts us in a great, in a great light, on top of everything else that we do. So looking at a budget that's a billion dollars plus, what's $100,000? You know, on something that is vital. You know, we always talk about teachers are not paid enough, they're always looking at cuts in funding and education. This is education. You know, why cut it? This is a worthy investment. You know, parks are worthy investment, road repaving worthy investments. But don't forget, you know, what we're teaching, you know, the younger generations and the future and the people in our city. And you have something that is so professional and so organized and so top-quality. I look at TBAE, if I didn't know it, I would think it would be something national, not just, you know, something local, because the quality is so good and the effort that you and everybody else puts into it. You know, you truly put your heart and soul into it. And this is, you know, the money is worthy, the investment is worth it, you know, beyond anything that I can say. So you'll always have my support, you know, and we'll hear from other council members here and see where we go.
Councilman Citro, then Councilman Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glenda, there's a reason why I really like you. You're both a Falcon and a Bull. Thank you. Television as we know it has changed. It's not the same. More and more people, like Councilman Minuska said, and myself, have cut the cable. We're streaming. We're streaming everything.
Absolutely.
Your, your network gives us the opportunity for a bunch of different reasons. Number one is choice. Not that our, not that our streaming here is bad, but you give us a choice. You give us a choice of the city of Tampa, the communities, the surrounding areas, the people within the city of Tampa. You give us history. You give us communications with Tiger Bay and other things and other of your, all of your other programming. I support you guys. I'd like to really see this go through, and I congratulate you on the work you've done so far.
Councilman Carlson.
Thanks for coming today. I've never seen such a big group show up for what is a relatively small amount of money, so thank you all for coming. I'm not going to talk about the politics of why you all are cut because it's a whole new day in the city and we're trying to all look forward. But we talked about the educational benefit of what you do, the information aspect of what you do. There's a cultural aspect because we need local programming of all kinds, and, you know, I'm proud to watch shows that are about local culture and local history and all these other things. But more importantly, I hope everybody watching, everybody listening will understand, this is really about economic development. You all have heard me talk about the difference between real estate development, economic development. Florida, since the 20s, has gone through 10-year boom and bust cycles because we focus on real estate development. As I talked to Sonia Little about before she left, there's a perverse incentive, tax incentive, for cities and counties to focus on real estate development because that's how we get paid. We have to, we have to move off real estate development. If you look at the Times story a couple days ago about the, what's happened in economic development over the last few years in Tampa, it's all real estate development. You look at what the EDC puts out, it's back office jobs and real estate development. Look at the, look at the accomplishments of the CRAs. It's all real estate development. We've got to change now, because of some change of the city, we've got to change and please God, get somebody who understands economic development, not just real estate development. I went with a group of St. Pete arts leaders to Brooklyn Harlem a couple years ago. We went to a similar organization in Brooklyn, and this is just a borough of New York. They spend, the city spends $6 million a year, and why? It's not about getting access to information. They understand that this is economic development. And I'll take another few seconds. The Accenture alone has 64,000 software robots. They are, they and other companies that are creating software robots are doing to white-collar jobs what the industrial revolution did to blue-collar jobs 100 years ago. Most of the white-collar jobs that are process-oriented are going to get wiped out. We're spending tax money to subsidize recruiting back office jobs to Tampa that are going to be wiped out in the next few years by software robots. The only chance we have for the future is creativity and innovation, and that's what you're offering. The businesses of the future include not just the arts that you talk about, but it's this, it's this new realm of augmented reality, virtual reality, and broadcasting. You had students line up that talked about what they learned from you and the opportunities. What's happening in Brooklyn with the $6 million is people are going in and beta-testing ideas. Students are learning ideas, and they're creating businesses out of it. They're creating programming that's then being launched nationally and in other places. And $100,000 for an innovative economic development solution is nothing compared to the money that we waste recruiting jobs that are going to be wiped out by software robots. So please, somebody find us $100,000 so we can keep you alive.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know that much about your funding. You just said something, but how many, where else are you getting your funding from? What government agencies, if any others?
Okay, well, aside from the broadcast service fees, which we charge the school district of Hillsborough, we just want...
That used to be the old, is that the one that, as I see your new name now, I think there's two, there's one now.
Right, so you knew us as the education channel.
Right.
And at that time, we always had two channels, but we, that second channel just didn't go out full county, so we didn't do a lot with it. When Frontier came in here, they both went full county, and then when I took over, I said, "We need to utilize this channel. We have to. Let's do something different with it." So we split that apart. That was created for the school district. They put us out to RFP, a national. We had to compete nationally against national and million-dollar companies.
In the essence of time, just tell me what money you get because they're going to look at me and throw rocks at me.
We get, we get from them. We get a smaller portion from the state, which is indeterminate, and then we're getting some funding to help with our internship program from the county.
So equal to $108,000, what does that apply to on the other basis?
The broadcast service fees, I think, are in the $140,000, and the agreement with the county is for two years, and that's $100,000 a year.
So the county is participating?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, I'm not here, you're not a preacher, and I'm not here to go to confession, but people want to make politics of it, so can I. I did vote for the budget, although I did vote for the shore tax. So if you voted against a budget, you voted against the shore tax. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Councilman Dingfelder, I think, wants to speak after everyone's finished. I'll put my piece in this. I want to caution folks, which is that I'm strongly in support of this programming. I've watched it. My mother's watched it. Great programs on Jose Matti and other great people. I think this is a great thing. But we're dealing now with many of us making budget requests to the administration. I know I've made, I'll be frank, I've made a lot of concerns to my friends in the administration on my views of the budget, that it's very conservative whenever it comes to spending, particularly in areas that I care deeply about, that I represent, et cetera. And we're dealing with priorities in that regard. We're right now a size 38 waist with size 38 pants, and we're asking for a little bit of elastic, right? We're asking for a little bit of elastic. There are issues that I'm asking for elastic for, for my district and for other things. I've talked about more money for code enforcement that I don't see there. I want funds to have a good down payment on my autism park, on our autism park that we have in my district in New Tampa. Different kind of parks improvements that we've talked about throughout the city of Tampa to make sure that all of our parks and recreation facilities and playgrounds are accessible to children with developmental disabilities and physical disabilities, things that I care about. I think that when we talk about $100,000, you know, something that cost for, for example, the study on the much-desired-by-folks pools in Seminole Heights, that's a lot of money. And I want to be careful in terms of, how can I put it, being a responsible individual as I subjectively see it, which is when I go to the administration and say, "Look, there are things in the budget that are priorities for me, that are priorities for my district", I don't see them there. And then I go, "By the way, let's also give $100,000 to this television. It's a great thing. I strongly support it, but I think a more reasonable allotment would be warranted as a request with credibility from council." That's just my opinion. Again, I strongly support what you all are doing, and I, and I do hope that there is some city support for it, but I think that a full-on request from city council would undermine some of the requests that we've made, some of the requests that I've made very aggressively privately to the administration. So I just want to urge council just to be careful in that regard. And Councilman Dingfeld.
Okay, just a couple of things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are generically wise words, and I can't say I agree with all of them, but generically, we do always need to be prudent. That's what we get elected for. We just got a letter from, a memo from the mayor an hour ago indicating some modifications to her original proposed budget, $400,000 to study, develop a master plan for the park system to see what our needs are. I don't know if that, if that is in part in response to your request about the accessibility park. I was actually going to bring up accessibility park a little later in our discussion. She also mentions almost $400,000 in regard to, in response, I think, to Councilman Good about an additional EMS car in the neighborhood that you're speaking to, I think.
I'll address that later. I'm humble about that, but I still have a few concerns, but I'm humble about that.
Right. And my point is not to get into the details, but to say that this is a moving target. I'll say this through the chief of staff, that we appreciate, we all appreciate the fact that the original budget was submitted. As a matter of fact, I want to share the charter provision with council because I know we don't spend our nights reading it, but once a year, we probably should. But basically, what this says about the budget in section 7.02, and I won't read the first part, but basically, it says the mayor will submit, submit the budget X number of days, et cetera, et cetera. But the relevant part is the top right-hand corner, and I provided a copy to the clerk, too, so it's part of the record. It says, "Council is authorized to make such changes in said budget as it deems necessary for the proper and economical operation of the municipal government, and the budget as adopted by the council shall then be, shall be presented to the mayor for approval as provided for, as provided for all the ordinances of the city council." And then it does speak to veto authority, et cetera, which I'm pretty confident we shouldn't or won't get to. But my point is this, is we heard this a lot during the campaign, is that we don't have a lot of authority. We have zoning authority, and we have budget authority, and our budget authority comes from that one paragraph, that one line, that we're authorized to make such changes in said budget as we deem necessary and proper. In this case, I think two things. Number one, they were in the budget. They were in the budget to $109,000. There's never been any good rationale that I've ever heard about, about why they got cut. We were coming out of the recession, and then they got cut. But I don't want to dredge up ancient history. They got cut. They've been out for two years. There's no good reason for it. I think they provided a very persuasive argument to go back into the budget. And with that, and without going in any more details, I'd like to, I'll make a motion that this council respectfully request that the mayor consider agreeing with us. I don't want to force this. We don't need to force anything today, but maybe a vote will indicate how council feels about this organization and this $100,000. But anyway, so respectfully request that the mayor agree with us and add TBAE back into the budget to the tune of $100,000 to do the things that they mentioned in the handout, including a new African-American heritage program, a new NAACP program, continuing their Art Perspectives program, continuing Filmmaker Spotlight, adding a new Veterans Strong program, and all the other programmings that they do during the year. So that's, that's my motion. It's a respectful motion to the administration and to the mayor. And as somebody said, I think Mr. Minuska, $100,000 out of a billion, I don't even know what percentage that is, but it's not, it's not overwhelming.
Any discussion? Councilman Miranda.
I'm not here to say yea or nay. I have to look at the whole necessary. We talk about affordable housing. talk about, uh, affordable housing, we talk, which is nothing is affordable anymore, we talk about building housing for those that need, that really need a place to say that is the only American dream, and yet, whether it's a hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand, or twenty thousand, or rent here, or rent there that we shouldn't be paying, we don't have it. We talk about building stadiums and the hell with the houses. So what is it we're doing, what is it we want? You want to do one, or you want to do them all as little pieces? I don't know. So my, my vote is that I like to vote for it, but I'm not going to vote for it, because I don't know all the ramification yet of everything's gonna come down the pike by either the third or the ninth. So I have to be prepared for what's coming, and if I make a motion now, if I vote for the motion, then my word is better than anything I said. If I said yes, I'm gonna vote yes, if I said no, I'm gonna vote no. So I want to wait to see what I have, see what I have left, maybe I will, and maybe I won't, so I want to be just as fair as I can to all the public. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, uh, maybe we wouldn't put this in the motion, but I think we have to think of this as an economic development tool, not a marketing or communication tool, it's not an extension of the marketing department, although I'm sure they would love to work with them, but, um, i- if you look in that context, their budget is small compared to everything else, but we spend a lot of money on economic development that I think is mostly wasted, and hopefully with a new view and new strategies, we'll, we'll look at economic development a different way, and if you look at this as an economic development tool, and the, the potential, and we can hold them accountable in the future, we look at the potential for the people that are going through there to start businesses right now that are related to new jobs of the future, um, I think it's, it's worth it. If you compare it to affordable homes and some of the other things, yeah, we have priorities. You compare it to some of the facade grants, it's cheap.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Councilman Dingfelder, this is just a friendly suggestion to the mayor.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, before we vote, you know, my concern, I echo what Councilman Miranda said, which is, uh, there's a matter of our, of our word and our credibility, and I should say my word, my credibility, which is I've gone to the administration with certain issues that are not yet a hundred and percent resolved, uh, and there's a, I think whenever you're a, a, a council district representative, there is a priority list, this is on my list, this is something that I support, but I think by having this, uh, uh, motion for one hundred percent, this would be for one hundred percent funding, correct, six figures?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, there you go, yeah, um, that's certainly something that I support in spirit, but I think to back it up with my word, I think, would actually betray some of my other budget priorities that I have for my district, so according with that, I can't vote for this, even though if it was a vote urging the mayor to put some funding in the budget for this program, some funding, that's certainly something I can get behind, but a hundred thousand dollars, I think that that level will betray what I want, so, sorry.
Okay, so your legal department, uh, this is not the proper forum for changing budgets, that's when you're gonna have your budget hearing, there's nothing wrong with you saying you'd like that to be looked at, you'd like that to be considered, but voting on something like that now, this is not the budget hearing, all the public isn't here, and that, they should be here for that, so when you have your public hearing, all I'm saying is, I'm suggesting a modification to the resolution.
Councilman.
Or the motion.
I think Mr. Citro actually stated it very well, Joe, can you repeat what you said? Because I agreed with it.
Well, I, I, I add, I, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I ask Councilman Dingfelder if this was a friendly suggestion to the mayor, and after I've heard our, our city attorney, I, I tend to agree with him, this may not be the place to do it, I am in favor of asking the mayor to adjust the budget so that there is a hundred thousand dollars to TBAE, I, I, I'm having second thoughts, but again, you asked me, and I, and I'm repeating what I said, Councilman Dingfelder, is this a, a friendly suggestion to the mayor?
That's it, that's it, it's not binding, it's not binding, it's not anything except a friendly suggestion to the mayor to add a hundred thousand dollars for TBAE, who used to get a hundred and nine thousand, and with inflation, they'd probably be up to one twenty-five by now, but their, their reduced budget, uh, from where they were two years ago to a hundred thousand dollars, it's nothing more than today than a friendly suggestion. And, and I think it's important to send that friendly suggestion, so that way she can have a week with, working with these fine folks to look at it and find out where it will come from. Look, they're still modifying the budget, they just sent over eight hundred thousand dollars of changes, so it's not like we're, you know, inventing the wheel here, they're, they're already doing this, so with that, that's exactly what it is, it's a friendly suggestion.
If I may rebuttal to that, Mayor Castor, I'm asking you to please fund TBAE to the tune of one hundred thousand dollars, there's my friendly suggestion.
And why not, why not put it in the form of a motion? I don't understand the difference, because that way we can all say it together, or at least perhaps four or five of us can say it together, which has a little more weight. Let's, let's take the vote.
Councilman Carlson.
Just, just to clarify, uh, city council attorney, um, is there any reason in the charter that we can't send a friendly suggestion to the mayor in the form of a resolution?
Well, your motion, it, it's not a resolution, it's in the form of a motion, which is a communication to the mayor.
Is there any reason that we cannot do that?
Hmm, as a, I would agree with Mr. Torito, if this were a formality, this would not be the forum, because it's not a public hearing, but if you wish to communicate to the mayor as a body, through this process, through this motion, that is appropriate. It's, it's merely, it's merely right now a communication.
And if, if we vote on this, I'm gonna vote for it, and I haven't asked the mayor for anything other than to put money in the general fund reserves, which were burned through in the last few years, um, but, uh, but again, it's with, with all respect, because there are a lot of priorities out there, but I, I happen to believe in this too.
Councilman Maniscalco.
Real quick, you know, I'm a, I'm an easygoing guy, and in my list of requests to the mayor, um, you know, I want to, I want to get some pools fixed in my district, and in that is a hundred thousand dollars for the, for a study, um, there's a little bit of money for Villa Brothers Park, which is also in my district, and that's it, and pave a couple of roads, build a couple of sidewalks, which we have to wait for all for transportation and all that stuff, that's it, I mean, it wasn't a, I, I'm not asking for a lot, you know, so what's an extra hundred grand, split amongst if we have four votes here, twenty-five thousand each council member, you know, we're not asking for millions of dollars, we're not asking for, you know, anything ridiculous, I remember when I voted, was one of the votes for thirty-something million dollar Curtisixon Park, they found the money for it, you know, we had to do some improvements afterwards, I think another million dollars, we supported that as well, but money was found, but this is, this is a drop in the bucket for something that I think is so significant and important and, and such a worthwhile cause, so that's it.
Councilman Gould.
Gentlemen, I appreciate all the comments, uh, you know, and, uh, we all want to get behind worthy causes, and this is a worthy cause, uh, but I'm hungry, my district's hungry, and I, I've read the mayor's proposal, uh, and I, I'm humbled by some of the suggestions, but I think there's still room for a little more conversation, because we're hungry. I, I could support something for TBA, but, uh, maybe not a hundred and eight, but I could really support something, uh, as a starting point, but I have to be honest with, with everyone, District Five is hungry, and I'm still looking for the things I'm asking for, so, uh, I could be in support, but maybe, uh, and ask to the administration in reference to something, maybe not all, but to something, but I, I have to tell you that District Five is hungry, and I, I, I'm really not backing off my hunger, because I'm hungry.
Yo tengo hambre también, that means I'm hungry too, no, but, I actually am hungry, no, but i- if I may comment on that, and again, my, th- this is a very, very worthy endeavor, but if I vote for something like this, that's funny, um, if I vote for something like this, I gotta go back to my friends in Forest Hills, I gotta go back to my friends in Bush Boulevard, who were just here this morning, and tell them that, listen, that additional code enforcement, enforcement officer that you wanted, I potentially, in theory, asked for that money to go somewhere else. I gotta be, I gotta be true to myself, I gotta be true to my district, uh, and, and to the needs of the city in that regard, again, I will look at the screen, Mayor Castor, I'd love to see some more money for this endeavor, but to put that high of a dollar amount on it is something, without taking care of first, my district needs, that would lose my credibility in terms of what I've asserted to the administration. And, and for me, it would probably be, you know, easier to vote yes, but I gotta be, you know, true to what I think is right. Anyone else?
I, Councilman Dingfelder, I suggest we, I, I think we've all said to the mayor, wherever she is, and her, and her, her chief of staff and former chief of staff right there, we've said to them that this is really important, and I'm sure she'll, she'll look at it seriously, and, and I hope that as we, as we relook at economic development, as I say, economic development instead of real estate development, I hope we'll all have a, a chance to participate in, in working on the cost-efficient things that really drive our economy, not just subsidizing real estate developments, and this is one of those things that we can look at, so I, I think we, without maybe, it's your motion, so you have to decide what to do, but without having a vote, I think we've all sent our indication, everybody's heard it.
Uh, Councilman Dingfelder, do you wish to vote on it, because we have a second by Councilman Maniscalco, or?
I think that we will start running into problems when we get too parochial on our districts, I've been a district councilman for almost eight years, I understand those kind of pressures. How, what's the expression, united we stand, divided we fall, okay? Like Mr. Carlson said, he's hardly asked for anything, um, at the end of the day, I had a list, m- most of my items were similar with the mayor's list, and so we crossed off many of those items. Yesterday, she included an item in terms of the fifteen dollar, uh, minimum wage, which I was very happy with, um, but I don't necessarily claim that as my victory, because that's a victory for everybody, including the mayor, and especially those people who needed it. But I think if we, if we just, if we start doing that, we not only, we not only hurt the process, we hurt this body, in my opinion. This group came forward, fifteen of them came forward, spent the whole day here to tell us why they did a good job, and virtually every single one of you agreed with them and said, as an organization, they've been doing great things, they've been doing great things for thirty years, okay? Over the years, they've been cut, they've been cut, not just by the city, but they've been cut by the county, they've been cut by the state, you know, they keep getting cut, and yet they keep hanging in there, right? So why, why wouldn't we just give them a vote of confidence today? I don't, I really, I'm at a loss, and Mr. Carlson, I hear you politically, it'd probably be wise for me to withdraw that motion and just let them hang out there, but I'm not gonna let them hang out there, I'm not. I think that, that I'm calling this motion to say that, that this is not an outrageous request, we can't compare it to the millions of dollars that are needed for affordable housing and everything else, because if we did that, we wouldn't fund anything, okay? But as Mr. Carlson laid out very nicely, this is not just about a media thing, this is about economic development, okay? And we spend millions of dollars, uh, with our good friend Santiago Carrado, on economic development, and, and the chamber folks, et cetera. So I know I'm being a little more emotional than normal, but, but I, I will call the motion, and let's, let's see where we vote, thank you.
And I, I want to respond to that if I may, I'm, I'm a district representative, represent District Seven, you know, I've, I've never been parochial, uh, all I've done is been sent here to fight for the people of my district, and also to take a citywide approach. When it came to supporting, before I was elected, when I ran for office, the stormwater tax that was done in two thousand and sixteen, I caught hell for that in my campaign, but I said yes to that. When it came to demagoguing downtown development, I said no to demagoguing downtown development, and I said yes to supporting downtown development, and I still supported a hundred and ten percent. And the budget we voted on in two thousand and seventeen, I voted eight months after being elected by sixty-five votes to raise taxes on, on my constituents and on everybody. Why? So that we could take a citywide approach on parks in Villa Park, and Williams Park, New Tampa Rec Center, all over our city. One of the things that I objected to was not something that's unique to my district, but that's unique to every single family in this city raising a child with special needs, and accessible parks, whether they be in East Tampa, South Tampa, West Tampa, or Northern New Tampa, that's a citywide approach. Uh, I, I think we all here, um, take a citywide approach, I, I know I do, uh, we are one city, we're all Tampanians or Tampeños, however you may pronounce it, um, and, and that's certainly our heritage, however, that being said, when there are issues in my district, acute needs, we just sat through an hour-long, more than that, workshop on the needs of Bush Boulevard, you had folks come down from Bush Boulevard, that community, talk about their needs, not their wants, not their wants, basic needs, things like code enforcement, things like transportation improvements, crime issues, et cetera, again, I think that by putting this as a priority in effect, in my own mind, subjectively, ahead of that, I, I would be betraying that, that's not parochialism, that's a citywide approach. Yes, sir.
John Bennett, Chief of Staff, I just want to offer a comment, and maybe that'll help facilitate where we're heading, um, three things, point one is that we've heard the data, and that requires leadership after that, and I think, I heard Mr. Carlson say, we're in a point of creativity and innovation, and that's what happens when we have the data, and we, we get into healthy discussions about moving our community forward. I've listened to the passion of the program, um, I heard it from the administration, um, I take those things extremely seriously, um, so duly noted on hearing what the issue is. We're still in a process, has been said by Councilman Miranda, that process still has time, we still have opportunity to discuss. But the third thing I want to say is about the creativity innovation, yesterday I met with the Pepin Academy, for those of you that know about the Pepin Academy, they have eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds that are in the number of about fifty-one, that are looking for opportunities to thrive in the workplace. It's, it's a very passionate opportunity for the city to support those. The reason I'm bringing this up is that there, I have had opportunities in the last ten to fifteen years of government service to find in-kind and other creative ways to support programs that are not always directly funded that way, and I think the key here is to look at what we're trying to do, realize the benefit of what's in the community, and figure out how to get there together, and I think that's been duly noted on my legal pad, so I just want to let you know from the administrative side, I've heard it, I understand creativity and innovation is important, and, um, this won't be the only discussion over the only line item that we're gonna have, but I just want to share that philosophically about how we're thinking, all right?
Thank you, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and, and Councilman Dingfelder, you wish to vote then? Proceed.
A motion and a second.
Okay, let's do it, sir, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, all in, and second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yea.
Roll call. Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yep.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Vera?
No.
Okay.
Motion carried with, what was it?
Miranda and Vera.
Miranda and Vera voting no.
Thank you, and, and again, in case if the mayor's watching, I think there is a seven to zero, uh, vote over here for supporting this programming, uh, within the proper context, and I think that's a, a very good message to take, okay? Is anyone else? Thank you, counsel.
Let me say one thing.
Yes, sir.
Chief of staff, uh, you know, uh, I know you a long time, and you're a problem solver, and you like to make compromises, and I think that was a hell of a job coming up full horse and doing what you just did, you saw the passion of the council, even though we have some desires, and you saw the need of the people, so I just want to say thank you for your leadership in doing that.
No, we're in this together, thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you, okay, anyone else here from staff to speak on the budget, any further questions from Tampa City Council? Because all we've talked about is the cable show, and I know we have a lot of concerns on the budget, yes, sir?
Mr. O'Hara, could, could you just talk about, I, I mentioned the, the, uh, the general fund, uh, balance, and I think it's combined with like a Parks and Rec fund, but, but my, my concern, which I've spent a lot of time talking to you about is, and I just want to have you talk about it, please, publicly here, um, uh, the reason why I didn't ask the mayor for anything is because, um, uh, we had, and you can correct my numbers, but, um, when Pam Oreo handed off, we had about a hundred and fifty or so million in the general fund balance, and that's kind of the way I look at it, the rainy day fund, in case we go into recession, and I think it's, uh, when Mayor Castor took over, it was about eighty million, plus or minus, and my concern is that if we go into recession, which could be, we could, we, we won't know for a few months, because the numbers look backwards, um, if we go into a recession, uh, we've already, we've already cut services to the bone, as, as folks here say, so if we go into recession in two or three years, we're, we, uh, we may have to cut services even more, so I want to make sure we have a, a general fund balance that's high enough that we don't have to cut services more during recession, and as you know, the staff in, in your new department has done a great job, uh, building up the, uh, the other reserves, so that we have high AAA bond ratings and others which keep our interest rates low, so we can't touch any of that, even though we have money, money in reserves, so could you just address, uh, the mayor's strategy regarding the, the general fund reserve, how much, how much of the surplus is going in there, and, and what the strategy is going for, please?
Certainly, sir, and I hear them ruffling papers behind me, so I presume they're finding the detailed historical information.
Yeah, sorry to put you on the spot.
That's quite all right, but let me give you a, a broad-based history, uh, primarily you're correct, uh, when Mayor Oreo left, and as we planned for and reacted to the Great Recession, we had a very, very large general fund balance, we had very good fund balances in some of our other funds, not so good in, in, for example, solid waste. Now, I say all that because we have different funds, as you know, and each one of them, or most of them require a substantial reserve to make the rating agencies happy, and to make sure we are in a very stable financial condition. If, if memory serves, and I'll confirm or refute it in just a moment, it's about a hundred and forty million, and we, when we dipped into that for consecutive years, in addition to expenditure cuts, including, as you heard, or as you've heard us say for years, about seven hundred positions within the city, along with the elimination of some services, in an attempt to maintain the services as well as we could, we did dip into the general fund balances considerably. Now, you mentioned some, uh, some very, very good credit ratings that we have in water, wastewater, et cetera, et cetera, we have, over the past couple of years, put solid waste back on a very, very firm footing, and they've got a very good fund balance, water has a very good fund balance, wastewater has a very good fund balance. From our perspective, even though it has declined, the, the fund balance in the general fund right now, and the fund balance as contained within the budget presented to you, is also very, very good, it's approximately twenty-three percent. It's approximately 23%, well above our policy of 20%. And if I'm not mistaken, it's about 110 million dollars. Ah, he's got it right here. Thank you, sir.
Can you just tell us how much new is being put in this year?
5.7, almost $6 million is being put into the general fund balance to maintain, and here's the point, uh, that I'd really like to stress, to maintain that 23%, because as your budget grows, and we've no reason to think it will not continue growing, you have to put more and more money into your fund balance, because it's a percentage of your expenses. So I think your point is well taken. Not only, uh, do you have to plan for potential economic challenges, but as our budget grows, we're gonna have to continue to plan to put more and more funding into that general fund balance reserves, our savings account, if you will. And of course, if it's in your savings account, it's not in your checking account. You can't spend it. So it's approximately $6 million and 20, and I anticipate it will require more in fiscal year 21.
Yeah, of course. And then Councilman?
One last follow-up. It, in, if, I, you all are doing this, but I think it's generally understood in, in, in business and in government, that during the boom times, during the positive economic times, you save money so that you can spend it during the, the, the downtimes, correct? And, I mean, besides having the, the coverage ratio, uh, it sounds like that's the general philosophy you're following, right?
It, it is the general philosophy, and you heard me reference, just a little bit of a nuance here, you heard me reference our policy of 20%, which is a very good policy. We're in very good shape according to our policy, as you heard me state. But we've gotten into a posture now, we've been very, very successful at continuing to maintain and grow that fund balance. So we've gotten into a posture that the rating agencies, they don't consider our policy any longer. They consider what we've been able to maintain. So we've got a good policy, but if we, we think if we drop below that 23%, and maybe even if we don't increase it, the rating agencies are gonna look at, look at us with a little bit of a sideways glance, based on our success of the past. It's a good story to tell, but it requires more and more resources.
Councilman Miranda?
I, I agree with everything, especially what Councilman Carlson said. However, there, there's one thing that we have forgotten, and hasn't been brought up. And it's in 2027, and you think that's a long time away. You only got one more bite at the community investment tax. And when that's over, you tell me where the money's gonna come in for fire engines, police cars, all types of equipment that we buy without money. And I think that if I remember the budget, and just looking, and this is, again, I looked at it a few days ago, it was like 37 million in 2020 or 2021, I forget which year it was, that we had put in there for, for expenditures of those kind. So whoever's here, if I'm here, I'll be in a wheelchair.
He'll probably be here. You'll be here, but we won't.
Thanks for the compliment. But what I'm saying is that someone is gonna have to look very closely the next two or three years, because those contracts are coming up from the Sports Authority. They'll be, right, 2019? And I think they're last taken, the last, that contract is in 2027? And something's gonna happen, and, and we have to prepare ourselves, how are you gonna handle that great expenditure? Which is a big one, because I don't know if the public will vote again for another tax like that.
Uh, agreed, so you make a very good point. And as you know, uh, and, and as you'll see or have seen, we have and continue to plan on relying very heavily on that community investment tax for our assets, police vehicles, fire assets, things like that. Uh, it, it's been terrific, but it's, at, as of this time, it appears finite.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Councilman Goods, and then Councilman Dingfelder.
There's a word in the business community, when you're dealing with bonds, and, and you overachieve, and I, my mind is blank, but 23%? It's, that's a, that's a big, that's a good number. It's a big number, sir.
It is. It's 100, uh, and thank you, Mr. Perry, it's 106 million, little, little less than 110, but 106 million dollars, 23% in the general fund.
I mean, I mean, so, you, you're gonna get a good rating with that type of, uh, percentage? And I, I know we, we, we wanna save money and do what we gotta do, and I, I respect all of that, but I think we're, we're, we're still over, we'll still be over to our, our cap, to where we have enough money per our charter for that, for our reserves, with, with 23%. Will, will we not?
We will.
So, I mean, I, I, I respect what, what Mr. Miranda said, because it'll come a time, but I, I look at right now, if we have it to spend right now, we need to do the things we need to do right now to get on that path. And I, I just look at that number, 23%? And, and, and I hear, but I, I, my figures were a little bit higher than that 106, and I'll, I'll go back and look again in this book to look at those numbers, but I thought it was, that those numbers were a little bit higher. But I'll check again, but I, I, my thing is, if we have enough money to put in that reserves, that we have this extra money, we need to do what we need to do now, those projects that, that are waiting, have been waiting for a long time.
Councilman Dingfelder, then Council, I'm sorry, sir.
Could I, I just expand on that a little bit? Further to what you were saying, Councilman Carlson, we went from a high of 140, almost 143 million in 2010. So we have, uh, spent that down to a low in 2014 of 86, almost 87 million. We have, we have taken some hits in our reserve. Again, still, uh, well above policy. I'd just also like to add, it's great, it's great to have wonderful credit ratings. Um, it's not just bragging rights, of course. Uh, it, it manifests itself, itself in the strength of our financial condition, indicating the mayor and council's political will to make sure that we have a sound financial condition now and going forward. And of course, as you've heard, it, it helps us save a great deal of money when, and not if, when we get that, when, when we anticipate getting more debt service in the future. So they're, they're great to have, but there's a significant savings, uh, and positive aspects we experience from having those rating, uh, those positive ratings. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Dingfelder, then Councilman Nascalco.
I didn't have anything else on the reserves or anything that I just saw.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was it some additional items you were saying, you were talking about?
Okay, well, let's, how about this? We'll deal with the reserve issue, Councilman, and then we'll come back. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Nascalco.
Just a, just a random thought, as Councilman Miranda mentioned, that the CIT runs out in eight years, or whatever it is. Why wouldn't the public renew it? And I'll tell you why I say that, why I ask that question. Nobody thought all for transportation was, not nobody, but who wouldn't think all for transportation would pass and the school tax at the same time? The school tax sunsets within 10 years. So basically, which is a half cent. CIT is half cent. Would it not make sense for the public to renew CIT at what it is? So we, I mean, we can't speculate on that. We have to prepare that nothing happens, and folks decide to just keep their sales tax at a half a cent less, but it would be fiscally prudent for folks to vote in support to renew a CIT, considering everything that it funds. I mean, and then we have a 30-year chart that we can look at of everything that it has funded, but just my random thoughts.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah. The, the trade-off here on the reserves is that although we could spend a lot of the money now, uh, my fear is that, uh, if, if everybody says we're already cut, as far as we can cut, if we don't have enough in a couple of years, when we're in the middle of recession, we're gonna get hammered by constituents. Imagine however bad you think our service level is now. I think it's pretty good, but better than I expected from the outside. But however bad you think it is now, it's gonna be a lot worse during the recession. Some of you all lived through this, and, uh, and I wanna make sure we're able to cover basic services. Uh, I don't wanna get yelled at by constituents, because we can't fill basic potholes and things. So I, I, I just wanna thank you and Sonia, she's gone, but, and the, and the team and the mayor. Um, that's a higher number than, than I even expected, and so I'm, I'm happy that you all saved that much. And, and for my constituents who are watching, in two or three years, if we're in a recession, um, if we're able to maintain some of the services, then you'll know why I pushed for it.
Anyone else on reserves? Um, just a, a brief remark, you know, in, in looking at this letter, I, I think this is a very good step in the right direction, so I wanted to salute you all for this. I, I really appreciate that 110%. You know, I echo the remarks on concerns in the reserves. I, I, you know, I, I brought up the 2017, fiscal year 2018 budget. You know, the reason why I, I, I supported that budget, and the reason why, you know, I'll, I'll say it, we raised taxes, is because of that issue. Because we wanted to make sure that we could, going forward, you know, tighten our belt some, right? But not suffocate ourselves, like I believe it was Ron Weaver said that, um, in, in 2017. And that's why I voted for that, and I think we're, we're seeing the, the positive benefits of that. We're seeing the positive benefits of that, which is why in this budget, you know, we can continue to balance out that fiscal responsibility, the idea that we've gotta set money aside, because folks talking about we're not out of the woods yet, well, we're gonna be back in the woods, uh, probably in a year, two years, we're gonna get a recession. That's just the way that it is, and we've gotta be prepared for that. But that doesn't mean that we have to forego our longstanding debts and obligations to our neighborhoods. I think that we can balance out both, uh, you know, by seeing, uh, this. This is a good step in that direction. So I'm, I'm happy to see a lot of this, and I, and I know there'll be further talks, but I always look for that balance. But I think a lot of that balance couldn't have been achieved without those tough steps we took in 2017.
Thank you, sir. Could, could I just, again?
Of course you may.
Offer just a little bit more? Yes, you know, despite going from 143 million dollars in reserves down to, in the high 80s, we have replenished it further, uh, to, to an extent, further to Councilman Carlson's comment, but those are the types of actions, you mentioned increasing the millage, that's included. Those are the types of actions that the credit rating agencies pay attention to. The, you drew it down, we got it, you're replenishing it, and you've got the political will to get additional revenue from, from someplace. Those are very, very positive, and that's what, that's what has helped us increase our credit ratings, despite dipping heavily into the reserves. Um, you know, uh, the, the rating agencies will read what is printed in the Tampa Bay Times. They may watch, they may be watching now, or they may watch it later. They take into account all of this data, not just the numbers, but also the discussion and the dialogue and the action. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, okay. Councilman Dingfelder, I think you wanted to change subjects, sir.
Yeah. Um, not that reserves aren't important, they are very important. We appreciate, we appreciate, uh, what you do on that. As a matter of fact, I recall those good years, uh, when we built the reserves, and I was glad to be part of that and vote with Mayor Iorio on that, to get us up to that high level. We needed that. We needed that, because when the recession hit, obviously, I mean, you know, that's, that's why the next administration was able to survive and keep the city running and prospering and, and, uh, and be ready for the good times that we've been lucky enough to have for the last couple of years. With that said, um, I wanna switch gears a little bit, no pun intended, to, uh, sustain, sustainability in vehicles. When I was on council last time, and I don't mean to dwell like an old man, but when I was here the last time, um, we started talking about hybrids, using hybrids, uh, instead of, uh, traditional gas cars. Uh, hybrids were novel at the time in 2003, but we started buying a few. I don't know how many we have left. I don't know if it's been, um, the pattern of the city to continue to do hybrids, uh, and that sort of thing. Um, but I did notice in the budget book that, at least as far as I could see, we are purchasing five sedans, quote unquote. Uh, one for HR, two for the technology department, and two for solid waste. So I picture little, you know, little inexpensive, you know, two-door, four-door sedans, relatively inexpensive, they show a budget price here of anywhere from 25 to 30,000 dollars, depending on which department. With that said, I would love at least a commitment before we get to the budget hearings, and it doesn't have to be in writing, doesn't have to be part of the budget book, um, to say that, why, why don't we, why don't we switch into electric fleet? You know? And this is a good opportunity. I know we can't switch our three or 400 cars that we have, but this is the first five. So why not, why not the first five? Why don't we go electric? I looked it up online a little while ago to see what a Volt costs, and, uh, not that we have to get a Chevy Volt, but just for an example, that seems to be a comparable car, and it appears to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 32, 32 to 30,000, 33,000 dollars. You have one, Charlie? You got the Volt?
He's got the Volt.
Yeah, I thought so. So Charlie's leading us there. Anyway, so that, that's just sort of a comment, not looking for a vote or any...
I understand.
Not looking for a vote or anything else, but I think that if you're talking about this, pretty much the same amount of money, we can lead this community by example, um, you know, starting to switch over to electric vehicles, and it is the way of the future. I know we have to figure out where we charge them and that sort of thing, but there are options. There are options. That's number one. And as long as I got the floor, um, two other things. Mr. Chairman, one of our good friends, Viva, Viva Shabad, uh, I talked to her yesterday. She's my appointee to the, uh, budget advisory.
Yeah, Viva, sure.
And, Viva. And, um, uh, she's great, she's got great ideas, and I said, "Viva, what, what do you want in the budget?" Because she is putting a lot of time into the budget advisory, uh, group. And she said, "We really need that accessibility part to go further." I guess, is it started now or something?
You're talking about the, the, the so-called autism park for New Tampa? That, that's, we're, in, in 2017, as part of that budget, we secured about $90,000 for the design and development of that park, right? There are some challenges right now with regards to the area, in terms of where it will be placed within New Tampa, and we're in discussions with the administration on that, but that is one of the things that I'm pushing for, which is what this, uh, was in response to.
And I specifically wanna be on the record, uh, supportive of that on Viva's behalf, but also on behalf of the entire, uh, community, of the autistic community, which I know you've been deeply involved in for decades. Um, I think it's extremely important. We've done, we've done some similar things down here at McFarland Park with Freedom Playground and, and Ms. Bezansky, who did that.
Sure.
Um, and, and we did great things on that, but heck, if you live in New Tampa or anywhere in the North End, Pasco or what have you, you're not gonna come down to McFarland Park.
Sure.
You need something up there. So I'm totally supportive of whatever we need to do to take that to the next level. And then finally, my last item is WMBE, um, on the, on the minority and women-owned business and that sort of thing. I think we need, and Mr. Bennett and I talked about this yesterday with Dennis, I think we need more personnel. That department got cut. I think it pretty much got cut in half during the recession. We're not in the recession anymore, we're out of the recession, and I think that we can talk all we want about WMBE, but if we're really gonna make some more, some strides, I think we need more personnel. So that's, that's my soapbox today.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goods? I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Here was saying, uh, all three of those items, and of course, the sustainability and the hybrid vehicles. Chief of Staff just handed me some, some current information regarding progress that the city has made, and I can get you more information as to what those, uh, types of sedans are that we anticipate in fiscal year 20. Uh, as you probably know, as you all probably know, one of our major concentration areas has been compressed national, natural gas for our solid waste fleet. Uh, to that end, we've purchased 76 CNG compressed national, nat, national gas, natural gas, uh, solid waste trucks, which now accounts for about 58% over half of our fleet. So we're looking at that as progress. Uh, additionally, we've purchased 16 hybrid vehicles, which is about a third of our mid-sized sedan complement. hybrid vehicles, which is about a third of our mid-sized sedan complement. So we feel we're making progress, and I'll provide additional information to you.
Thank you. Councilman Gudes.
Well, gentlemen, several phone calls about a couple of my items that were publicized, but I guess I got a lot of tremendous calls that a lot of them were asking, "Why didn't I add about housing?" It's a concern. We talked about the WBE was cut, but the housing department was cut too. And when you look at it, we have a housing crisis within the city of Tampa. And they ever worked over there. I mean, those little ladies over there working, but they don't have enough people to feel the calls, the concerns, to be out there, helping people to get some of the programs that are good that we have that people just don't know about, because we have a lot of programs. I've had four people just last week that I've sent them about our occupied rehab, but sometimes we can't, there's nobody answering the phones. And it's not those ladies' fault, they're just, there's not enough people to pick, to talk to. And that's a concern when people are getting frustrated while, "Councilman, I called, nobody answered the phone. I called three days, nobody answered the phone." So I think, for me, we have to look at where our crisis points are within the city. And we know housing is a crisis right now. And if we don't have people answering the phone to help people who are in need, then what good are we? If we're not getting the information out there in a marketing strategy way, or not there in the community, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, we know where the housing crisis locations are, but we have a building that's way out of the limit. If I don't have a car, I'm barely making, how do I get way out there? You gotta bring some services a little bit closer. We gotta find some vacant buildings that we own or something, another rental portion that we can bring some of our services closer to the people who are most vulnerable and who need it.
Mr. Bennett, and then, well, Councilman Carlson, you want to speak before Mr. Bennett or something to add? You sure? And then, go ahead, sir.
If I may, do a quick comment again. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Councilman Gudes, I appreciate that feedback for two reasons. One, as probably all of you know, the mayor just kicked off that affordable housing advisory team, and the first thing that typically does is try to identify the city's level of service and the delta between what's needed and what we should be able to supply to the community. Some of that coincides with the fact that she's committed to bringing government closer to the community, and Lemon Street, you know, I heard you on that side. Actually, I was on the phone with Vanessa yesterday over things on that side of the city. So bringing government closer, having the affordable housing advisory team, defining the level of service, defining the gaps, is exactly where we're trying to head in that. So I think we're on the right trajectory, but we need deliverables, as you mentioned.
Oh, I got, just a couple more. Mr. Chairman, pardon me. I did receive the memorandum from the mayor, and I am humbled, I truly am, in respect to Mr. Bennett, who's come aboard and who's tried to be some mediator for some of these items that all council are talking about. Would you really appreciate that? When I still look at the EMS, I still look at, we're saying, a peak service. And I'm still trying to understand that when we already have two units that are doing peak service. So I'm trying to figure out why we, we send additional rescue car when we've already got rescue car to the city? I mean, we got a big old bay that we're, warehouse for our fire rescue equipment, warehouse. There's a place that, we talked about that decon site that could be housed there, and that bay, 16 can be opened up, and one of those cars that are not being utilized will still be saving money and put one of those cars, it don't have to be at 10, I can make a compromise, it could go to 16.
Right.
So, and we have, instead of some, 12, 12, have a full 24-hour running car service. Versus, you know, I want to save the city money. I'm not harping to try to spend, 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 but I still think, and again, I'm appreciative to try to come with a compromise, but there still is a better way. And I just see a better way as we still have a 24-hour car. We have a location already. I know 10 that maybe later on, down the line, will work about some renovation or some new construction for 10, but right now, I can compromise for 16, but I still, on the premise that a full-time car go at 16 for the East Tampa residents. And I'm still stuck on that, gentlemen. I love the compromise with that item, but I think we still can get there. And I see what we're trying to do, you know, but we don't have to do a lot of this because it's already there, some of it.
Yeah, an excellent point. In consultation with the Fire Chief and the Revenue and Finance staff, we started with a balanced budget view on this. And what we did is, when we were whiteboarding this, just as of yesterday, which led to the memo, we saw opportunities that, within a balanced budget, to not, you know, obviously, we're in general fund, and we're in other funds for the rescue car. This is the way to stay within the balanced budget and supply that level of service that we talked about. The peak, as you know, in the fire service, there's really two dynamics. One is time on scene, which is a level of service and response, and then there's volume. And when the Fire Chief looked at the time on scene as well as the volume in that space, they felt like this was the model that we could do, which is already encumbered, because of course, peak services, or peak dynamics is based on kind of an overtime model overlaid, overlaid against whatever the demand might be in the field. There is an overtime budget to work with already. That's why we didn't really have to adjust the budget to make this happen. The capital item of the vehicle is a different fund, which allows us to put that vehicle in the field within its turnout time from production. So we felt like the compromise within the balanced budget was the most viable option to get started on what the vision was to serve the East Tampa residents.
Well, I appreciate that, but again, I still feel that we can get there still.
Mm-hmm, I do too.
I think we still can get there.
Yep.
My last, Mr. Chairman, you give me a clue?
Yes, sir.
I do like the idea, because I know, Mr. Chairman, the chairman is also fighting for parks and recreation. We need things all over the city. So I can see where we're going with that portion, but it's still, it's not addressing District 5 needs. It's addressing a need throughout the whole city, but right now, it's not addressing a District 5 need. So we still need to have conversations in reference to District 5. We talked about some options. I'm comparable to some CRA versus General Fund. I'm comparable to that. The CRA chairperson, some of our people, did contact me. They would love for the General Fund to fund it all, but they are comparable to working hand in hand. So I think these are still, we're moving in the right direction. I'm grateful, humble that we're listening, and I'm hoping that we'll get there by our hearing times. Thank you.
Yeah, completely understood, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carlson, and then Councilman Citro.
A couple of points, based on what my colleagues have said. Number one, Councilmember Gudes, you talked about affordable housing. Don't forget, remember the documentation I handed out the last CRA meeting? Affordable housing, by law, should be a major part of the CRA efforts. And as we're going through the strategic plans with them, I think, we'll talk about this in the CRA meetings, but I think we need to give them the guideline and expectation that they're going to spend a major part of their efforts on affordable housing, and we can partner with the city on that. But we've got money there, and we can still get feedback from the CACs and all that, but out of the, what, nine CRAs, only one really is doing very much in affordable housing, and so there's a huge opportunity to affect that, and there's money that's being held back for it. The other thing, I was thinking about what Councilmember Dingfelder was talking about before, about, and we were talking about the earlier item in the vote. My understanding or recollection is that in the spring sometime, there's an early meeting where the mayor will have us have a conversation about the budget. I don't remember if my memory is right or not. Is there some conversation about the budget early in the year?
Yes, sir. Typically, we'll come before you and give you an update, a mid-year review, as we call it. As a matter of fact, you know, just for educational purposes to the viewing public, you know, we've got a balanced budget for you for fiscal year 20, and of course, fiscal year 19 isn't even over yet. So we will bring you a mid-year review, talking about how the budget that you will approve is doing and how we did in the year.
What month is that? What month is that?
Typically, March, April, May, depending on availability.
Yeah, it was just before we came on board, that's when. So my point here is that, in my conversations with the mayor, I said, "Look, you can do like your predecessor and hand out goodies and count to four, and then get the budget approved." And she cut me off. I think I talked about this twice. She cut me off and said, "That's not who I am, and that's not what I want to do. I want to work with everybody. I want to get things done." And I think in the era of collegiality, which I think she's trying to promote, and we're trying to promote, I think in that, in that update, what I would suggest is we not only get an update from you all, but maybe somebody can facilitate a conversation among us to talk about the systemic issues that we think are priorities. We all have individual priorities, maybe for our districts, but maybe there's systemic issues like housing or other things that we could talk about at that time next year to lead into it. Follow on that. The other thing is that Councilmember Dingfelder was talking about electric cars. We have a new sustainability person coming on board, and I think we talked about a workshop. But same thing, if the mayor and Chief of Staff would allow, we could have that person maybe facilitate a discussion with us together, because we hardly ever get a chance to talk together and hear what each other thinks, and talk about what are our priorities for sustainability. And the same thing for the new Head of Economic Development. To me, that's the most important position in the city, and we really should give some input and guidance, because we're listening to constituents all the time. Ultimately, they report to Chief of Staff and the mayor, not to us, but once a year, or at least as they're onboarding, if we can give some collective thoughts, it will help, help lead to the collegiality that we all want.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Citro.
And going off Councilman Carlson and Councilman Dingfelder, something that hasn't been talked about while we have the money here, making Tampa a green city. Electric cars are great. They're fantastic. With 70% of natural gas coming from fracking, I wonder what fracking hole we're going to get that fracking gas for the natural gas of our solid waste, but that's a different discussion.
Joe, were you cussing?
No, no. I was talking about fracking.
Oh, okay.
My point being, even though we have franchise agreements with certain utilities, solar panels on top of every governmental building will help pay for our electricity, which in the long run will help save us money, which in the long run will help pay to charge the electric vehicles that we so desperately want.
You're here.
If we can start the discussion now, yes, Councilman Carlson's correct, we need to put money away. Councilman Gudes made the point that we have extra money. If we can start the conversation now about Tampa becoming a green city, who knows what's going to happen in four, eight, 12 years? We might be free of all fossil fuels in this city. Now's the time to discuss turning Tampa green. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Any word? Okay. And I just wanted to say, to build on Councilman Dingfelder's comment on the Autism Park, thank you for that, sir. I know, obviously, you're a big supporter. I'm sure we all are. You're obviously a person of great compassion, so thank you for that 110%. As it applies to that, the Autism Park, I had obviously made my position known on that, and I certainly would like to see this budget take some steps in that direction. This is certainly something I have to review further, this correspondence we just got on the master plan and whatnot, but I certainly think that that's an endeavor that benefits all of our city. One of the, you know, really good things we saw with the last administration was the autism-friendly Tampa initiative, and I think that this is something that really goes forward, especially in a part of the city where there are so many families, families raising children with special needs, a part of the city that's growing. I mean, New Tampa 33647 had about 8,000 folks in 1990, about 25,000 folks in 2000, and today, it's about 50, 60,000. And last year, we just approved another 800 homes over in Kbar Ranch. It is growing. Like I always joke, New Tampa is a size 40 waste with size 38 pants, and every day, we're eating at Steak and Shake. So it's growing, 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 and we have to certainly make those amenities. But yeah, so I appreciate that, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
See, this, what time, 5?
5:01. Don't be late.
Uh, any-
Don't be late.
Sorry, Councilman Citro, Councilman Citro wanted to-
Alexander, come on up here. Council members, staff, this is my newest intern. His name is Alexander Phillips. And please, Alexander, shout it loud and proud. Which college do you go to?
USF.
Go Bulls!
USF!
Move to receiving class.
And one, and any new business motions?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to ratify and confirm accommodation presented to Chief of City Attorney Jerry M. Gawarts on Tuesday, August 27, 2019. Mr. Gawarts retired from the City Attorney's Office, having served 26 years as a dedicated servant to the city of Tampa.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Miranda, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilman Carlson?
My legislative aide and I, along with some of Florida's top economists, have been working on a presentation about basic economic numbers for Tampa and also looking at how other cities measure themselves. And I would like to present it on October 24th, either personally with-
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Meniskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I give you another one?
Yes, sir.
One of the things I've been pushing, which could be done with All for Transportation, but All for Transportation is being delayed by a long time, is working on the design, the planning for neighborhood commercial districts, and knowing after we've gone through this long budget discussion, we don't really have extra money inside the city. I went to the Planning Commission, and they do have some grant money that they allocate once a year. What I would propose is that we engage them in a conversation about allocating $10,000 or $20,000 for each district, and maybe, maybe two for District 5, because there's Seminole Heights and Tampa Heights plus East Tampa there. And so I talked to them about maybe getting $50,000 to $100,000 to serve as grants to do master planning. Hyde Park has just done, gone through a plan that costs $20,000, but they're comprehensive plans on how people can walk and shop and other things in the area. So anyway, I would like to make a motion that the city of Tampa ask Hillsborough County Planning Commission for up to $100,000 to be used for the development of neighborhood commercial district plans.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yeah, the last thing, I talked about Taryn Sabia, who, from the Florida Center of USF, who's been working with Public Works and Parks and Recreation. I don't know if we have time on October 24th. The one that I proposed, I added on to October 24th, right? Is that right?
The accommodation.
No, the one that, the one where I'm going to present the economic data, that's on October 24th. Did I make that clear?
I don't know if you did.
Can we just get agreement that that was October 24th?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay. And then, and then I'd like Taryn Sabia to come back, maybe if we hold a workshop in November, but they've got, she can brief us each individually, but I think it would be worth us having a conversation about that study. It's comprehensive. It shows what will happen to South Tampa and the rest of Tampa with sea level rise, and so it really affects the way we plan and budget. So is it, I'd like to make a motion that we bring her back with Public Works and Park and Recreation and Transportation, Stormwater, Emergency Planning, and Zoning Departments, ideally on October 24th, or if we put a new workshop in November.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second, I believe, by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
May I ask clarification? Do you see your date, then, as you put it on? The motion you stated was-
Both on October 24th.
Both, as well as October 24th? Okay, because you added, I heard you-
I said, unless we create, for the second one, unless we create a special one in November.
So the motion takes it to October 24th?
Yeah, sure, indeed. Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Citro. And Councilwoman Miranda, you had nothing further, sir?
No.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There is an establishment that is celebrating its 70 years in business this Saturday. Don't have to raise your hands, but I'm sure all of us have been there one or twice. It's called The Hub, and it is one of the finest bars in Tampa. Again, it's been here for 70 years. And I would like to give that establishment a commendation on September 5th at our 6 o'clock meeting, just to make sure that the owners are wide awake and can be here and present.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Meniskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
Thank you for your enthusiasm, counsel. Nothing more.
Roll call.
Councilman Meniskalko.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Deputy Chief O'Connor, who I believe is retiring today or this week. Thank you for his service. You may know his wife, Mary O'Connor, who retired a couple of years ago, was, I believe, deputy chief as, well, at a time. So that's that. And also, I know that we have this hurricane coming our way, but Saturday, August 31st at 6:00 PM, there's a place in West Tampa called Mickey's Subs, little sandwich shop, locally owned. They are at 4411 North Armenia, just north of Martin Luther King. We're going to do like a little ribbon cutting, so if anybody, depending on the weather, anybody's available, you're more than welcome to come.
What time is it?
6 o'clock in the evening. So it'll be free sandwiches and whatnot, but you know, support a new local business, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gudes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We talked about code enforcement extensively this morning, and I took up that option you gave, and thank you for your leadership on that. Gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion for legal department and code enforcement to attend a workshop on January 3, 2020, discuss options for the fees and fines collected as a result of code violations, be removed from the general fund and deposited into a separate trust account that can be utilized when returning it to individuals that do not have the funds to bring their property into compliance.
Second. The motion is to do it or to explore?
Explore. Explore. Workshop, workshop.
It's on the work, you asked for January 30th?
30th, January 30th. It gives plenty of time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, Councilman Citro?
Councilman Gudes, if I may add, that if we can have legal staff down here also, experienced with code enforcement as a magistrate, code enforcement can implement fines, however, if those fines are erased or given back. So if we can also ask legal for their opinion on that, is that all right?
I did have legal in there as well, sir.
Okay.
Legalism.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gudes. Who seconded that? Was it-
I'll second.
Meniskalko? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
Yes, sir. I don't know if you guys know Mr. Marvin Knight?
Mm-hmm.
Better.
He has a great idea he's brought to the city. They're going to have a big Corvette car show. Plenty of people have called me. It's going to be in Ebor City, I think beginning at 12 noon, this Saturday, the 31st. Hopefully, you know, the storm can hold us back a little bit, but the 31st will start at about 2 o'clock. I'll be there, and hopefully, you guys can come out as well.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder, anything, sir?
Congratulations to Marvin, and no, nothing else.
Just very briefly, I have to ratify the commendation I made to the Foot Foundation.
Sure, second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion from Councilman Viera, the second, Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, I also, I know Bob McDonough has retired. I wanted to thank Mr. McDonough for his service at the city. I know we've talked about his forthcoming replacement, and Councilman Carlson spoke very well on that, and I appreciate that. Also, want to encourage the administration to have a diverse hire, certainly somebody that reflects the diversity of the city and our pluralism. I think that's something that's very, very- I think that's something that's very, very important for this position. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because just to clarify, somebody said, "Well, I know that that position, person works for the mayor," but we all know that that person traditionally has also worked for the CRA.
Exactly.
So in some ways, Mr. Joe Citro is our chair of our CRA. I would love for the administration to include Joe, if he wants to do it, as part of that search process.
How about this? We, I don't think that has to, a motion for that, or?
You know, it's, it's novel, but I, but I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, and, and I would ask Councilman Citro that in, in doing that, that you take, if you are amenable to it, which I'm sure you are, the suggestions made by Councilman Carlson, and also my suggestions on a, on a diverse person that reflects the diversity and pluralism of our city, but I, I, that's a good suggestion.
If I can, counsel, just to be clear, it would be counsel's opinion if we were to make a motion today. Certainly, you're not acting as a CRA, and it's not a noticed meeting of the CRA, so it can't be a direction to him from the CRA to take that action today.
Yeah.
But if that is the consensus of counsel, you've communicated, but if you want to do it...
I'm willing to leave it loose right now, because we don't even know about the legalities of, of Joe doing that, but I think it's an interesting idea.
Thank you, Councilman Dingfelder, for, for that, and, and yes, I agree with all